Commissioners, could you take your seats, please? Good morning. It is now nine o'clock and we will call the meeting of the Chavis County Board of Commissioners to order. Would we have the Pledge of Allegiance, Mike?
Everybody could stand and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you bow your heads and if you feel led, the Lord, join me, please? Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the blessings of this day. Thank you so much for our great state, our great county, and our great nation. Lord, we just ask blessings for those who are here and blessings for our law enforcement that are out there protecting us every day. Lord, you know what's happening in Israel. Please help us bring the last of the hostages home so their families can have closure. Thank you so much. Let us have open ears to hear and open hearts to know the right thing to do. Thank you, Lord, and to God be the glory. Amen.
Cindy, do we have a quorum? May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Wade. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Approval of the minutes of...
Mr. Chairman, we have two minutes, the minutes from our regular meeting October 16th, and then our special meeting from November 5th. I would like to make a motion to approve both. Is that correct, Stan? Is that okay? Yes, okay.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Dana and one and a second by Commissioner Corn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you can see, we have a full house this morning. We've been honored to be able to thank some people within our community for years of service. I'd like to start off with, we have a proclamation here for Lineman Appreciation Day. And real quickly, I wanted to give you a little bit of stats on them. Letty Kirkendall sent me some information. Their crew at the Roswell Service Center of XL Energy, the crew is comprised of 11 linemen and four troublemen. Service area, their operation span, 1,011 miles of primary lines supporting the communities of Roswell, Dexter, Hagerman, Lake Arthur, and Artesia. Their outage response, as of 2025, the center has addressed 758 outage events affecting 61,516 customers with an average outage duration of 157 minutes. The reliability metrics, year-to-date service reliability of XL Electric in our community is 99.7%. That alone, I think, is pretty heroic, but I'd like to read this proclamation for... Lineman Appreciation Day. Whereas emergencies which affect the electrical service to our homes, schools, hospitals, public safety providers, and businesses can occur at any time requiring dedicated professionals to leave the safety and comfort of their own homes to provide for the safety and comfort of thousands of other families. And whereas when an emergency occurs regardless of extreme temperature or severe weather events, the prompt response of linemen to get power restored is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas the ability of our law enforcement officers and firefighters to protect the public safety is dependent upon the accuracy and speed of which emergency information is obtained. Without connected electrical power, this information can lose validity and timeliness. And whereas linemen are the first and most critical link that our communities have providing the emergency restoration of power needed to ensure both the necessities and luxuries that we've come to depend on in our modern world. And whereas linemen must work high atop power lines 24 hours a day, 365 days a year to keep electricity flowing, playing a vital role in the energy infrastructure of our nation. And whereas acknowledging linemen and the profession of linemen as well as the often overlooked contributions of these brave men and women should be heralded as heroic contributions to our community. Now therefore, the Chavis County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 13th, 2025 to be Lineman Appreciation Day in Chavis County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our community and citizens safe. Done this 13th day of November 2025 by the Board of Chavis County Commissioners. And we have quite a number of linemen and people here. Maybe they should line up in front and would you guys like to go down them for a photo?
How about the Commissioners?
Okay, some of both. Alright. Who's gonna accept XL? Who's gonna accept it? Do you want to accept it?
This picture's just yours.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have yet another proclamation. This proclamation is really appropriate for today because Ms. Alice Eppers was very much a part of our elections process and she really went above and beyond on all things having to do with the election. Of course, today we're canvassing the election, so with your permission, I'll read her proclamation.
Yes, please.
Alice Eppers Day. Whereas Alice Eppers served eight years on the Chavis County Board of Commissioners during her tenure, Commissioner Eppers was involved in numerous initiatives, including the design and construction of the Chavis County Administrative Building and the design and renovations to the Chavis County Courthouse. And whereas Commissioner Eppers was instrumental in shaping the future of Chavis County, having served in many leadership positions over 20 years as field representative for two congressmen, Joe Skeen and Steve Pierce, also serving as a board member of CASA, Burindo Cowbells, Roswell Assistance League, New Mexico Cattle Growers, Southeastern New Mexico Grazing Association, Chavis County School Board, Chavis County Republican Party, and dozens more. And whereas Alice's contribution to the Chavis County and New Mexico DWI programs has been an encouragement to tens of thousands of New Mexicans with unwavering service to Project Graduation, Red Ribbon Campaigns, Maze of Life, and Every 15 Minutes, working with countless public officials, community leaders, and law enforcement from across the state, which ultimately led to her being deemed a community champion for DWI prevention. And whereas Commissioner Eppers was well-known across our state working as a representative of the Chavis County Republican Party, serving as chairman in 2009 and 2010, only stepping down in 2011 when elected to represent the New Mexico Republican Party as Congressional District Two Representative. She was also an active member of the Federated Republican Women of Chavis County, serving many years in many roles. And whereas Alice's greatest contribution was her dedication to family, giving selflessly, being present and available, protecting, loving, and teaching life lessons to her four children, never too busy to be their seamstress, room mother, FFA chaperone, NMMI supporter, team cheerleader, or whatever they needed at the time. And whereas Alice treated everyone with love, respect, and encouragement, providing an unshakable presence in our community, doing anything she could to help a friend or brighten their day, always showing her concern for others. And whereas Commissioner Eppers will be fondly remembered for her great sense of humor, her down-to-earth personality, and her ability to connect with the Chavis County employees. And whereas Chavis County recognizes that over the course of her terms, Commissioner Eppers provided a good balance on the Chavis County Board of Commissioners with innovative ideas and alternative viewpoints to complex county issues, being forever grateful for her many decades of hard work for the citizens of Chavis County. Now therefore, the Chavis County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim November 13th, 2025, as Alice Eppers Day in Chavis County. Done this 13th day of November by the Chavis County Board of Commissioners.
I'd like to add that I had the pleasure of serving with Alice on the county commission when she was on before. And I think the best thing you can sum up about Alice is she was truly a lady, a wonderful person. And we were very fortunate to have her.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have a presentation this morning from Brian Hotellin, our flood commissioner, or flood superintendent. But before he comes up, I would also like to point out, come on this direction, however. Brian Hotellin was nominated by the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management as Flood Plane Manager of the Year because of all the work he's done, not only during the flood, after the flood, but subsequent to that. He's done an excellent job of being a flood plane manager. And he was awarded the state award as Flood Plane Manager of the Year and would like to present that to him. You want to give us a quick update, Brian, on flood control? You have a job to do, too.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Just want to give a quick update on our Zuber projects. Since the government shutdown is nearing or is over, the furloughed NRCS employees that are doing the final review on our repair design should be back at work soon. So the ball will be rolling on that again, which is good because we have 24 months from October 16th to get our federal matching grant from the state expended. And that's all I have for an update this month. We'll have our annual report next month and it'll be a little more detailed, but I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brian.
We didn't have any flooding this fall, so you can take a breather.
Yes.
It's supposed to be this weekend, hush.
Thank you.
Mike, it's very...
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's a glorious day in New Mexico and Chavis County, isn't it? Great things happening. Just a few updates for you. Today is the Be Pro, Be Proud Draft Day over at University High School. Tim Fuller, very involved. I think Cindy may know that fellow. We have over 20 employers there already. We have about 200 students from across every high school in Chavis County that'll be there. We have a lot of stack displays, TransAero brought in a helicopter, and so on for the young folks to get an idea about careers after high school. But hopefully if we can get them engaged in what we have available here, that they'll stay here a very long time and be part of our workforce. You know, what I like to see, but more importantly, keep them in our community. So pretty excited about that. It'll run to about one o'clock today. If you get a chance to get out there this morning after the meeting, you can come out there and say hello to the young folks because that's kind of a big deal. Mostly high school seniors and a few juniors. In preparation for Be Pro, Be Proud, there's a lot of programs available to employers that a lot of employers just don't know about. And a lot of those are tied to funding. There's funding to help offset wages and a student if they need, you know, tools or uniforms, there's funds for that. So what we did was we created an employer workshop at the end of October and we had about a dozen employers. I would like to see more. But about a dozen employers there, we had Workforce Solutions or America's Job Center now, as they're called, there to give a detailed description on all these great benefits for employers. So I just want to share with you, there's a lot of things out there and if you ever have any questions or have others that want to know, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to give them that information. This past month, and you've seen in our reports, I've tended a couple of different things. Site Selectors Guild and then the Industrial Asset Management Council Conference. We have several projects ongoing right now. We have several energy projects. One, it seems like they're popping up every day in my office, so we'll continue to work through those. And as you know, recently, we had an announcement with Project Hale, which was the drone manufacturing company of Aero Design. I have seen the patented drone myself. I've seen it fly, so I know it exists. But more importantly, I believe that as they move forward in their plans, they'll manufacture components and they'll ship them here and they're going to assemble and do R&amp;D and manufacture from Roswell. They're seeking to build a facility or acquire a facility, do that on the land, excuse me, on the airside, which is inside the fence. And hopefully they'll be in work pretty quick. They already have customers to purchase these drones and they're very heavy lift, so you can use them for a lot of different functions. And it is a fully patented piece of equipment. Recently, we sponsored and were part of the Zag Arch Manureal Event, the first one I think I've seen since I've been in Chavis County. And a lot of young folks were there on a Saturday and that made products and were selling them. And it was a very, very fun event for those young folks. We recently tended Mesa Middle Schools Career Fair as well. We brought employers in and worked with Mesa. We tried to work with Sierra who was working towards that, but we were unable to get enough employers involved, but we're going to work towards that. You know, all this is about workforce and everything that we do is tied to how do we find the human talent in our community to support the projects that we're hoping to attract and recruit to Chavis County. So we have to think back about not only what's great at our, what's good at our great university, but also our public schools throughout our county. And it's important for us to continue doing that because it's important for when our recruit companies, because the first thing they ask me is after you have a place, is tell me about your workforce. We have a rather large announcement December 4th. I think you all seen the emails for the say the date. And I think the time is shifting to the right a little bit from 10:30 to 11:30. But as we get a little closer, I know it's almost upon us, I'll get you the updated information. As a reminder, it's an announcement that involves four different states. And Roswell was selected as a place to do this groundbreaking announcement for New Mexico, Arizona, Utah, and West Texas. So this company is a Missouri company. They have nearly 400 locations across the country and they're rapidly expanding. Eight of them will be in New Mexico and we're, of course, we're going to be here in Roswell. Capital investment's good and also the wages are really, really good. So I think the average wage is about $34 and some change an hour, which is a good wage, about 25 jobs when they're fully employed. Amazon is building and if you haven't seen that recently, look forward to that happening. Still opening up in spring of next year. They'll be fully operational. Don't see any hiccups in that regard and that's moving along nicely. With that, I'll leave you to your meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
So the drone deal, how big did you say it actually was? I mean, as far as production-wise and that sort of stuff?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, as far as size of the number of drones, it'll be...
Number of individuals and...
Oh, number of jobs. So the number of jobs is probably around 30. But I think it'll grow after that because that's going to be during the preliminary R&amp;D phases, testing, and what have you. But it'll probably grow to about, I'm told by the company, to about 100 jobs. And the drones are about the size of the sheriff's and Cindy's desk right there. They're maybe a little bit wider. It's a pretty good-sized drone. Not pointing out the sheriff, but the desk, but it's about that size. And it's, it looks almost like a teardrop, has a very large rotary fan in the middle that for lifts, it can lift very heavy objects. Plus it has, I think it has four, maybe five, I think four outrigger motors as well, so it can take a lot of weight.
So is this part of Amazon's thing of delivering packages? Is that the reason why they're making this here?
No, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the reason they're manufacturing these here is a couple of things. One, because of our weather. Believe it or not, our tax structure in New Mexico is better than their corporate office in Michigan. But they have, I don't know that Amazon's really where they're at, but it's really tied to DOD and three-letter acronym, alphabet soup agencies. So law enforcement-type activities.
So as far as for commercial use, applicators spraying farms and that sort of stuff, they're not that type of drone or they would be able to build those types as well?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, you know, I don't know. I suspect that they probably could. I've seen those drones before, those type of drones. This one's really designed to be a heavy lift, rapid deployment. And oh, by the way, this company, Aero Design, has partnered with Gus Technologies. You may have seen that in the newspaper a few weeks ago. Gus Technologies is a battery manufacturing company out of Taiwan that we visited that is going to have a presence here in New Mexico, it appears, which is good. These batteries are not the typical lithium-ion batteries. These are, these don't get hot, they don't catch fire. You can shoot them with Sheriff Harrington's weapons and it won't explode and it'll keep working. So we're pretty excited about that transition because those batteries will feed the drone project and also another potential project that we have rapidly approaching us. So, but back to your question, I'm sure if they wanted to outfit it with agricultural spraying or what have you, or at least the cameras to, you know, do crop, you know, work, I mean, sure, that's certainly possible. But they're really designed to carry weapons because of heavy lift. But liquid's pretty heavy, too, right? So I mean, it's, I know, I'm not the drone guy, but I've seen a lot of them, so.
I might be interested.
We'll have to connect you, actually, sure. Happy to do that.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Dr. Paul, would you like to make a presentation on what's happening at the college?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come forward. Again, we appreciate the support of the community last week with the Mill Levy. We look forward to adding career and technical education programs to the campus and also dual-credit opportunities to the other schools here in the county and all the high schools. And we've been working closely with the efforts of EDC. They've been kind enough to include us... Uh, they've been kind enough to include us. We have folks over at the Be Pro, Be Proud event today, so we're happy about that. So, thank you very much, sir. If you have to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Okay, first item.
The canvas, yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, of course, the first item is going to be the canvas, the election, and Cindy's going to come up and, and explain all of the details of that to us. Uh, I would like to mention that, uh, the commission did put out a proclamation for Election Workers Day on November 3rd on the elect, day of the election, and that was very much appreciated by the election workers, and I believe Cindy has some other recognitions that she would like to, uh, point out.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Before we get to the, uh, election numbers, I have a, an exciting announcement. The Chavis County Clerk's Office held the first annual ever I Voted sticker contest and today we have with us one of the winners. This is Stacy Sprouse and she is our winner from Lake Arthur High School. And while I'm talking to you about our sticker contest, she's going to pass out, uh, not only her winning sticker, but we had another winner, Brielle Pogan from Goddard High School, and she's not here today, but we will pass out her sticker as well. Uh, we opened, uh, this sticker contest to all of the high schools in Chavis County. We received nine submissions from Lake Arthur, um, and 18 submissions from the Roswell Independent School District Schools. Since we didn't receive submissions from all the high schools, we decided to choose one winner from the RASD schools and one winner from the Valley. And so, we had people from different county offices come in and vote on these and these were our two winners. Uh, Brielle Pogan, she's a junior at Goddard High School and her design featured an alien and a spacecraft along with the cow that said I voted. And then Stacy's sticker, uh, she's also a junior at Lake Arthur and her sticker has the Z symbol, a Road Runner, a cactus, and of course, a paw print for the Lake Arthur Panthers. Um, we do plan to hold another sticker contest in 2027. This is a fun part of elections. We usually hear the complaints and the bad things, but this was a fun thing that I enjoyed She got out of some school, I don't know. doing. All right. And so, I hope, uh, also the clerk that comes after me will continue this tradition. Uh, before we get to the numbers, you know, I always like to thank a couple people. So, thank you. I wanted to, uh, present Stacy with a certificate of recognition from the commission and just Elections wouldn't be possible without a whole, a whole group of people. say congratulations. And so, I would like to first thank you as Commissioners for honoring our election workers
She can get her picture.
with the proclamation. I think it was nice that that was done on November 4th, which was actually Election Day, so thank you for that.
She's going to come get her picture with you.
I would like to thank the voters of Chavis County.
Does Cindy need to come up too?
Cindy probably should too.
Each vote represents a voice and a choice and a commitment to shaping the future.
I think Cindy needs to come up.
Cindy, yes. That's cool. Whether voting in person or by mail, every voter plays a vital role in making sure our community and country reflect the will of the people. A heartfelt thanks to everyone who took the time to vote in this election. Um, I received a nice email from a gentleman named Steve Pack and I wanted to read it to you. It said, "I am disabled and my wife and I voted earlier this week and I would like to thank you, your staff and poll workers for the easy voting. I am confident that my vote will fairly and accurately be counted." And I was grateful to receive these comments from Mr. Pack because it portrays everything that we strive to achieve for our voters. Convenience and a confidence that the Chavis County Clerk's Office is fairly and accurately running elections in Chavis County. Of course, I have to thank our polling sites. They graciously open their doors to us and these facilities make it possible for voters to cast their ballots in accessible welcoming spaces. Their willingness to host polling sites involves preparation, coordination, and sometimes disruption to their regular activities, all for the greater good of supporting free and fair elections. I would like to thank our finance department. They work closely with us in helping to make sure everyone gets paid, which is quite a chore. I would like to thank our facility maintenance department, especially Joe Petty. He is, um, he helps us a lot with our signs and he also helped us back up our truck and trailer, which, uh, hope there's no video of when we try to do it. And we even got our county manager, Mr. Williams, involved in backing up our trailer for us. So, if you're out there and we need help backing up the truck and trailer, we're probably going to need your help. Um, Alex did check in on us and I appreciate that and I look forward to the continued improvements in Area D for future elections. And I would like to encourage you to keep a voting warehouse on the ICIP. Um, but this just goes to show the family environment we have here at the county where we all step in to help each other. And so, I would also like to thank the Clerk's Office staff. Many missed lunches and that's kind of important. We don't want hangry workers. Uh, many of them worked Saturdays, early and late hours. We have to keep up with lots of numbers daily, lots of phone calls, some angry individuals, that just comes with elections. Uh, they all go out of their way to make sure that those who need assistance receive it. Uh, processing again, a lot of same-day voter registrations, solving problems daily, being patient with one another, and being a great and fun team to work with. I couldn't do it without them. Um, now, on to the numbers. I did give you, I printed out some numbers for you if you would like to follow along. We had 469 absentee ballots that were counted, zero provisionals, yay, two military or overseas ballots, 2,618 early voters, and 4,613 Election Day voters. This, uh, equals a turnout of 7,702 ballots that were counted, which is 21% of the eligible voters for this election. We do anticipate two automatic recounts to be issued by the State Canvassing Board on November 25th. An automatic recount is triggered if there are five or fewer votes between the two candidates. Uh, the races that we anticipate having to recount are the Dexter Municipal Judge. There was a three foot, three vote difference between Charles McLean and Bill Wells. And the Dexter School Board, there's a one vote difference between Louis Adavolos and Ryan Regalatto. Tell these folks that votes don't count in Chavis County. Um, the automatic recount is scheduled for December 2nd and the County Canvassing Board, which is the five of you, will have to reconvene after the recount to canvass those results. The December Commission Meeting is scheduled for December 18th and will be too long of a wait, and so I don't know if you want to discuss that meeting today, but that's something you can do here in a moment. Um, I did give you a breakdown of the numbers we just spoke about and then the colorful page that I gave you gives you a breakdown of the numbers of voters by age, party, and gender. That's always fascinating to me, as well as a comparison with previous local election turnout. Uh, you'll notice this is the best turnout we've seen for Chavis County for a regular local election and so hopefully we continue to see participation rise. Uh, we would, we would appreciate your certification of these results today and I will stand for any questions.
I noticed there was one on the school board for Tatum. There was no vote. Is that one, one of the ones that you're going to redo or?
No, sir. We, we have one registered voter in the Tatum School District and so that person did not participate in this election, but they do have a little tiny section in Chavis County.
Okay. Perfect.
Cindy, on the, uh, drop boxes?
Yes, ma'am.
Where do you put those? Is that on here somewhere?
Um, so, the drop boxes, like how many ballots were received?
Yeah.
We received a total of nine ballots, seven, uh, all nine of those were received on Election Day, which was interesting. We received two at the courthouse location and seven here at the location by Area D.
That is interesting.
It is, on Election Day.
Yeah, on Election Day.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And one question, how many days after the, the recount do we have to canvass?
Um, the, the county manager was asking me that this morning. I do not know. Do you guys know that? I will have to find that out, but I would assume that the 18th would be too long for us to get that back to the, to the state. I'm sorry, I don't have that date with me.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wade, also keep in mind that a couple of Commissioners will be gone from the 10th on, so it probably needs to happen the 4th or the 5th or the following Monday would probably work, but just some food for thought.
Well, I won't be here then.
On any of those?
I'm leaving the first.
Okay. Could, could he join by phone or you just need a quorum? Wouldn't?
We would just need a quorum.
So, are we waiting on, do we need to throw out a date now? Is that what we're saying?
That's up to you, sir.
Okay. So, we're picking a date?
Well, I got nothing going on, so.
That's unusual.
Me either. You let me know.
I'd be back the 15th, but I don't know if that's too long or not.
What is the timeline, Cindy?
Uh, the recount will take place December 2nd.
Oh, the recount is December 2nd?
Yes.
So, we have to do it after the recount to certify it?
Yeah, that, that date was set by the state.
Okay, okay. So, anytime after the 2nd, but if we wait to the 18th of our regular, you said that'd be too long?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I guess we're going to see you on video or something.
Okay. I, I, as long as we can call in, I'm good. Just, if I'm not here, I'll call in, so pick a date.
I'm good.
So, they throwing out a date?
Does the 5th work for everyone? That gives us adequate time to get it advertised and everything? That'd be the next, well, the Friday after Thanksgiving.
Uh, December 5th?
Yeah.
It works for me.
I'm good.
Yeah. Okay. We'll make those arrangements for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, if appropriate, to have this canvassing meeting on December 5th?
Oh, no, no, sir. Uh, we don't need a motion for that. You need a motion.
Well, whatever she needs a motion for, I'm in.
Just to certify the results.
Let's, let's certify this puppy right now. I'll make a motion to certify this. How's that sound?
Second, Mr. Chairman, certified this puppy.
I have a motion by Commissioner Perry and second by Commissioner Dana. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, agenda item number one is a public hearing for ordinance O-118, which is a franchise agreement between Roosevelt County Rural Telephone Cooperative and Chavis County. Uh, this would authorize a non-exclusive franchise agreement with Roosevelt County Rural Telephone Cooperative Incorporated, DBA Yucca Telecom, for 25 years to operate and maintain telephonic communication and data lines and infrastructure throughout the county and to utilize county right-of-ways. This is a public hearing, it's been properly advertised per statute requirements. And as I look out, I, there, we have no representatives here from, uh, Roosevelt County Rural Telephone, but.
As, as a public hearing item, is anyone speaking for it? Online? Anyone speaking for it? Anyone speaking against it? No online, any? Okay. Okay, so we'll entertain a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a couple of questions here. I don't have a problem with it being a franchise, but where I have a problem is the terminology on the agreement. The terminology on the agreement by using the county right-of-ways, um, any public roads. I'm totally, in a sense, against it. When these franchises show up and, and want these, to put in these fiber optic lines and that sort of stuff, um, you know, they get government grants to do this. They should be paying for a right-of-way and not, I mean, if they want to use our road, because in 25 years from now, there's no telling what this county road's going to be. It could be plumful of stuff. And it's kind of like the natural landlines and stuff that they put in 18 years ago. You know, they don't maintain them after they get to a certain age. Um, some of these county roads are, have been in existence for many years and the way that the system works today, you know, the, for a county road, you have to, to, uh, release a deed to the, for the road and some of those roads back in the day, there's no, no deed or exchange of anything. The road was maybe 16 feet wide and now they've expanded them to, to a degree that it's 60 foot wide or whatever it is. And I'm, like I said, I'm totally against the way that this works. They're getting free money for, for nothing and we should be charging them for it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Corn, uh, a franchise agreement is not a requirement for a company to work within our county. It is something that we try to do with companies who regularly and routinely work here, such as XL Telephone Companies. Roosevelt, uh, Telecom only extends their lines about nine, there's about nine miles worth of line in Chavis County currently, or, and that's the part that they need to replace because they, they primarily deal with Roosevelt County, but there are a few residents, including former Commissioner Bilberry, uh, who is at the very tail end of that line. So, so that's why they dip into Chavis County. And the other thing is a franchise agreement does not automatically entail them free, uh, right-of-way use. You know, we do have in our road policy, uh, a schedule of, of charges per foot, per mile. It, it changes depending on, on how far they're going. So, as a franchisee, what we usually do is we will allow them to petition for a waiver of those fees, which would come separately from this. When the project starts, they'd say, "We have nine miles and here's what the road department, uh, has assessed." The road was maybe 16 feet wide, and now they've expanded them to, to a degree that it's 60 foot wide, or whatever it is. And I'm, like I said, I'm totally against the way that this works. They're getting free money for, for nothing, and we should be charging them for it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Corn, a franchise agreement is not a requirement for a company to work within our county. It is something that we try to do with companies who regularly and routinely work here, such as XL Telephone Companies. Roosevelt Telecom only extends their lines about nine, there's about nine miles worth of line in Chavis County currently, and that's the part that they need to replace, because they, they primarily deal with Roosevelt County. But there are a few residents, including former Commissioner Billbury, who is at the very tail end of that line. So, so that's why they dip into Chavis County. And the other thing is a franchise agreement does not automatically entail them free right-of-way use. You know, we do have in our road policy, a schedule of, of charges per foot, per mile. It, it changes depending on, on how far they're going. So, as a franchisee, what we usually do is we will allow them to petition for a waiver of those fees, which would come separately from this. When the project starts, they'd say, we have nine miles, and here's what the road department has assessed that cost to be, and that would come back to you on a case-by-case basis, whether they were a franchise agreement holder or, or not. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Stan, that's not unusual language or?
No, it's not. And it falls under Ordinance 44, the
Yes.
Right-of-way ordinance still applies, and they still have to do paperwork, but the franchise kind of guarantees that they will abide by our rules and regulations. It's just one more step, really. It's an agreement that they're going to do it. They still have to file a permit. The permit may be condensed a little bit, where if it's a long project, you can, you can work out the fees that way. It's just, but it's an agreement. If they don't, if you don't want to approve it, you don't have to approve it, and they can still do work in the counties to request waivers and all the other stuff. It's just an extra layer.
Well, I just, you know, I don't mind them doing this type stuff. I don't like the act of God clause that's in there, because sometimes, you know, like I'm getting at, some of these county roads are not as wide as what they are. They used to not be as wide as what they are now. That's what I'm getting at. And basically, they're basically piggybacking on the county road to get it free access in there. Otherwise, you know, I mean, if I'm the end server, if I'm the end guy, and take for instance, out here north of town, you know, they just put in seven or eight miles worth of, of that line, and they piggybacked on top of the county, county road. And they should have been, and it only served one guy at the end of the stinking line. You know, it's no different than in the oil field, you know, you got pipelines running here, there, and yonder. You know, you should be collecting a fee, which the landowner should be collecting a fee. And basically, what they did is, I should have been collecting the money, but they bypassed me and went down the county road, and that's not right. That's what I'm getting at. To serve one person, and they're in it for the, they're only in it for the money, regardless if the guy on the end even uses a stupid system. They're still making the, they're still making the money on the end, and I'm, you know, it, they're getting anywhere from 15 to $35 a foot to trench that stuff in. You know, the, the, the cost of the, of the cable is only like a buck, or a buck and a half, or whatever, up to $5. But anyway, what I'm getting at is they're making a lot of money to do something that serves one, one guy at the end. So, I don't know. That act of God clause, you know, a rancher can run into the stinking thing, running a water line across the, across the road, and we're liable for fixing this, paying for, paying for that stinking cable. Whereas, if it's in the county, county road, and we give them the easement, you know, they don't charge the county anything for hitting it, because we've given them that right, you know, and we've taken, I don't know, I'm just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not totally sold on them piggybacking on top of, of power, the power grid. I mean, that was a, that was an easement that the rancher gave to, to the power grid, and, and then the, the power company sells that right for them to piggyback on top of that. That shouldn't have ever been on there to begin with. It should have come back to the rancher, or whoever. But anyway, that's my piece.
Thank you. Good, good comments, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We can address the fee later, right? This is just an agreement to do the work.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Perry, yes. This, this is just our agreement. You're a company that, that we expect to regularly and routinely work within our county, so we have a franchise agreement. If it's Ma-Jones Telephone from Bowditle-Itley, and they come in to do a, something, we don't usually do a transmit, or a franchise agreement with them, but these are the local companies we regularly and routinely expect to be doing work here. And so, it's just kind of a preliminary exchange. You follow these rules, here's our rules, want to be sure you do it. You know that you got to have permits, and they agree to all that stuff up front. The waiver portion is in road policy, which is Policy Number 44. That is where it specifies if you would like to ask for a waiver of these fees, because the, the fees are spelled out, just like Berinda Water Co-op, when they do a road cut, they have to present a request individually for that project. We'd like to waive these fees or reduce these fees, and then it's up to you. It has to come to you. They don't just put it in and say, we don't owe you anything. The fees are already in place, and they have to ask for a waiver of that anytime they do it.
Okay, thank you.
And normally, they'll get requests from, like, New Mexico Gas, or XL, or CDE, they pay the fee.
Yeah.
You normally get the request from a co-op
Right.
That would say, hey, we don't want to pay the fee, but that, that's up to you guys down the road.
And, and we do have franchise agreements with the gas company, with Otero Electric, CVE, Lee County Electric, anyone that's a major utility provider within our county. We already have franchise agreements with them.
So, the fees, so the fees that they pay or we waive?
Go to the county, yes.
Go to the county?
Yes.
So, are we gonna start charging them?
We, we do charge most.
And what is that?
Would you like to speak, Joe?
What is that, what is that number?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We've got a big fiber optic program going on in the valley right now. The company that's doing that was probably in the $40,000 range in fees that the county's charged them. I send the permits to...
Per mile?
No, it, it breaks down in, in feet, actually. They get a break on, it's 50,000, or 50,000, 50 cents per the first thousand feet. Over a thousand feet up to 2,000, it, it drops down in dime increments, all the way down to anything over 10,000 feet is a dime, anywhere after that.
10 cents per foot.
Yeah, 10 cents per foot, sorry. So, there's no set number. The company that's doing this has sent me, I think we're in the, numbers in the sixties, permits that I've done in the last few months, totaling about $40,000. It's over $40,000. I just ran it, ran the numbers the other day. But that's fees that they have to pay the county for doing the work in our right-ofway. The way I feel it, and I've discussed it with Alex, if they do aerial work running along the power lines, I waive those fees, because that's, that's not disrupting our right-ofway whatsoever.
No, but it doesn't...
It's written that way in the policy, that I have that...
But it actually should be, it actually should be, the power company should actually go back to the landowner and say, okay, because that doesn't really state that in the original
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Corn, if the, if the power lines are on the private property, then they do deal with the landowner, they don't deal with us. Only thing that's ours is fence-to-fence typically. And that's, and you're right about the, the width. Most of it is 60, 60 feet, but it does vary. You get down in some of the older roads in the valley, they're 40 feet, you know, 50 feet. It, it's just in and out. But anything, any work that's done in our right-ofway, we do bill for. If the customer chooses, as it says in Ordinance 44, they can come before the commissioner and ask for a waiver of those, of those fees. So, that company can come back and ask for you guys to, to waive that $40,000. That's up to them. We don't, we don't encourage that, obviously, but that is an option they have per policy, for, for the road policy.
I wouldn't waive any other fees. But, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying. I mean, you've got some of these easements that are, are right-ofways that are 40 feet. So, they have a six-foot or a 10-foot working space.
In the shoulder, you mean?
In the shoulder. Do, does somebody inspect this and, and make sure that they're right online and not encroaching on somebody else's property and?
Yes, sir, that's in the agreement as well. In, in the permit agreement, not the, the franchise agreement. And that's in every permit that everybody, everybody does. And I know, it, it sounds like we have what I call these snake oil, oil salesmen that come through town, and you know, like your shingles when we have a hailstorm. You get these companies that come out of the woodworks. We don't really have so much of that. The, the, it's like they said a minute ago, the franchise agreements are geared towards the people that we do business with every day, that the people of Chavis County do business with every day. That's typically the people that we have the franchise agreements with for, for our right-ofways. It's not these out-of-town folks that come from California because something happened here, and then they're gonna be in Montana next week. It, it's not like, it's not set up that way.
Well, you've got some of these, you, you have some of these data centers and that sort of stuff. Are they gonna start tapping into some of these same cables? Are they making them bigger? Or are they gonna be tapping into them? And if they're tapping into them, then, then why, why shouldn't we be charging them a little bit more? I mean, they're encroaching on our space. I don't know. I'm up in the air on it. You know, they're, they're getting, they're getting...
Do we have a motion on this?
This is just a hearing, though, isn't it? It's not a, the decision will be next month?
No, the decision is now. This is an ordinance, we advertised it last month, brought it to you to advertise. This is the public hearing. If you guys approve it as an ordinance, there's a 30-day wait before it actually takes effect in case anyone wants to challenge it.
Do we have a right to change some of the terminology on this thing?
If the commission decides to do that, they could amend it as, as appropriate and as legally possible. Yeah.
Well, the... I mean, they're crossing through, they're crossing through us. And they're selling a product that they're getting a grant for nothing.
But they're paying the right-ofway. $40,000 isn't pocket change either.
No, it ain't pocket change.
And just for clarification, this particular project is a pretty small project. I don't know that it would rise to a $40,000. I mean, this is a very small amount in Chavis County, but they are providing the service to Chavis County residents as Roosevelt County collects it.
And I don't have a problem with that, but the problem is, the problem is kind of the act of God clause. That one kind of messes with you every time, especially on the landowners that are, that that's passing through. So... I mean, I agree, I, I'm ready, you know, for the franchise, that's fine, but the terminology needs to be a little bit different. I don't know how to do that, but...
Speaking of that, Stan, in that section, section six, that is just, that's...
The cooperative.
Language, like I said, lawyer speak or whatever, sorry, Stan. But that's in pretty much everything. Is that correct, Stan?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman, it is, and basically, what it's saying, it's not liable to the others that are in that, in that right-ofway with them. You know, in that area that you guys talked about, there may be three or four other lines in there, and they're not liable to any of these people for the interruption of any of the services provided with floods, fires, windstorms, hail, ice, those type of things, that if something happened, the cooperative still has to go in there and, and reestablish service as soon as possible. So, if something happens, it's on the co-op to get in there, or work through Alex and Joe to get in there and fix what, what's wrong at their cost.
Right, and the permitting starts over if something like that happened. They still have to come for permitting and fees and all that. Yeah, yeah, everything starts over, yeah, if any of these things happen. So, really, they're not off the hook. They have to, like you said, get it, reestablish service as soon as possible, but they still have to go through us and the permitting process in order to do that. So, the fees will be there.
Right, and if they can't give power or service to a resident, that resident can't come back and sue us
Right.
And say, hey, you didn't, somehow, you're, something happened, act of God happened, and now my service is broken, my service is off.
Right.
Then they still have to fix it, go through Alex and Joe to get in the, into there, get in there and fix whatever happened.
Right, so we can, we can charge them the fees, permitting, all that stuff. We're right back where they started, if any of these things happen. Thank you.
We good?
We good?
I'm good.
Okay. Chairman, if appropriate, I'd like to make some motion to approve Ordinance 0-118 franchise agreement between the Roosevelt County Rural Telephone Cooperative and Chavis County.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Wade. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yeah. Yes.
Passes.
Did you oppose?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, he opposed.
Okay, five zero.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Agenda Item Number Two is a request to ratify Agreement A-25045 between Chavis County and the State of New Mexico Tourism Department for the Destination Forward Grant Agreement for the creation of the Cultural Plaza in the amount of $183,100 and an authorization for the county manager to approve on behalf of the commission. The Destination Forward Program is a competitive grant that supports the long-term development and implementation of tourism infrastructure projects across New Mexico. Chavis County was awarded $183,100 to assist with the construction and equipping of the Cultural Plaza that we're currently building. The grant agreement required the county manager's authorized signature to approve and access the awarded funds. We're requesting commission approval for the fact that I already signed it, and the authority to remain in effect until the completion and full expenditure of those grant funds. The grant is set to revert on June 15, 2027. However, we assume that this Cultural Plaza will be done shortly after the calendar rolls over to 26. Thank you.
All right.
And staff begs for approval.
Are we, Mr. Chairman, Bill, are we gonna have a nice big tada when this is done?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Dana, we certainly hope that we can. And another thing that we're working on currently, when the courthouse was remodeled, and Stan will remember this, and they tore down the Wool Warehouse and, and several of the buildings there were razed, there was sort of, I don't know if there was an actual agreement, a handshake or a discussion, or exactly what happened, to put up a, a small monument or something saying, this was where the Wool Warehouse used to stand, and explain the history of the Wool Warehouse and the importance to our, our community. And so, now that we will have a water tower, because it's a railroad theme, and we think we could maybe hang a, a nice placard on that, or on the side of the stage. We haven't decided where the best location would be, but we would like to also honor the Wool Warehouse along with that process. And that time to do that would probably be during that, you know, christening of, of the new Cultural Plaza, maybe to, to roll that in at the same time and read it and, and point it out to everyone? So, yes.
I think that would be nice to honor our, our history.
There's not very many Wool people left in, in our valley anymore. There's one, I know.
Are you gonna have some of the, can you get some of those bricks or not to put around that, or?
Yeah, yeah, I, well, I, I think so, because I think most of those bricks... Yeah, yeah, I thi- well, I, I think so, because I think most of those bricks belong to Tom Jennings, the ones that I'm aware of.
I'll go get them.
And, and I'm sure, I'm sure we can probably talk him out of a, a couple dozen bricks. I, I don't think he would object to that. He's certainly always been very involved in doing things for our community. I'm sure he would support this initiative. In fact, he and I have talked about this particular thing, so...
Commissioner Corn, I, I dub you, go get bricks.
I'll go get the bricks.
I, I drove by there yesterday and if you, and the progress is coming along very well. The walls are up and it's really starting to take shape, and I invite all of you to drive by and, and view it, because it's going to be a very nice addition to our county and our city.
I think so.
It's going to be good.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we ratify Agreement A dash two-five dash zero-four-five between Chavas County and State of New Mexico Tourism Department for a Destination Forward Grant Agreement for the creation of the Cultural Plaza in the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand, one hundred dollars and authorize the county manager to approve on behalf of the commission.
I second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dana and second by Commissioner Corn. Any further comment? Oh, second by, excuse me, by Commissioner Perry. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number Three is for Resolution R twenty-five oh fifty-one, which would be the Chavas County twenty-twenty-six holiday schedule. In accordance with the Chavas County personnel policy, the commission establishes the holiday schedule for the following year. I've provided you with the proposed twenty-twenty-six holiday schedule, and staff would recommend approval of Resolution R twenty-five oh fifty-one. I stand for questions.
Mr. Chairman and Bill, I'm going to call out my mom card here. I would like to propose that the New Year's Day, Friday, January second, take that off and please put in Thursday, December twenty-fourth. That way we have Christmas Eve and Christmas Day on twenty-twenty-six. As a mom, loading up the car and getting the kiddos, we always like to travel on Christmas Eve.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so the, the question then would be, take off only Thursday the first and then come back on Friday the second and, and add Thursday, December twenty-fourth as well.
By Friday the second, everybody should be sober. Y'all be sober on Friday the second.
Proposed amendment, so whoever makes the motion, if you're, if you want to amend it that way or whatever other discussion you may have.
That's an awful lot of days to take off.
Uh-oh.
Any further discussion on the dates?
Pardon? I'm sorry.
You're going to take Thursday out of the...
No, 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 thir- thir- just Friday, just Friday. Yeah, moving that Friday, you'll, you'll just take off Thursday, January first, be back Friday, January second, and then you'll get Thursday, Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth, and then Friday, Christmas Day. And that's for the twenty-twenty-six. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, if there's no further discussion, move that Resolution R dash two-five dash zero-five-one, Chavas County twenty-twenty-six holiday schedule, as amended, be approved?
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Dana, second by Commissioner Perry. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you.
As amended.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Agenda Item Number Four is Resolution R dash twenty-five dash zero-fifty-two, which is a budget adjustment resolution for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. We're requesting all the budget items in Exhibit A to be approved. These adjustments reflect allocations for the general election grant we have, the Keep Chavas County Beautiful Grant, the New Mexico Matching Fund Grant for Flood Projects, a reimbursement for a flood grant project with NRCS, insurance deductibles related to a lawsuit, and the purchase of a tractor with a mowing, mowing boom for the flood department. Staff recommends approval.
Chairman, if appropriate, I'd like to move to approve Resolution R dash twenty-five dash zero-five-two, Budget Judge, Budget Adjustment Resolution for FY twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Wade. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you.
Where has Mike been now, huh?
I'll tell you what. All right. So, Chairman, Commissioners, good morning, first of all. Second, I'd like to just thank you for everything you've done for us so far. I think everything is going very well with your help and the dedication of my men. I think Chavas County is a safe and greater place, so I do appreciate that. I am here today for approval of out-of-state travel for Deputy John White to San Francisco, California, for his Phase Three phase to complete his certification as a drug recognition evaluator slash expert. This is going to help us in our community with cases and DWIs where a person may not be under the influence of alcohol, they may be under the influence of some other type of drug or narcotic, and he will be trained in how to recognize those, pretty much for each, each category that they have. So, very good class. I, I do appreciate John White for stepping up to the plate for this, because this is not an easy task, and it's not something that most people want to do. So he is, he is dedicated to it, and we appreciate that. All these expenses will, including the classes paid for by the federal government. The only thing that Chavas County will have to pay for is the hotel prior to his flight as well as his wages. This travel will be November the eleventh through November the sixteenth, and we request approval.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, on Agenda Item Five, the ratification of out-of-state travel as described by Sheriff Harrington, travel from San Francisco to California.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Dana. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
All right. All right, on to the next one. Chairman, Commissioners, this is in reference to an approval of out-of-state travel. The Chavas County Sheriff's Office is requesting authorization for out-of-state travel for my sheriff's administrator, Janet Garcia, to the Western State Sheriff's Conference in Reno, Nevada. This will be from February the twenty-sixth to March sixth of twenty-twenty-six. Other expenses are the registration fee, which has already been paid, along with the hotel and meals. The only amount outstanding on that will be the hotel and per diem. Like I said, the registration has already been paid. Fund from the LEPF line item for travel and training fund, four zero one dash seven five one for the administrator is what we use to pay that, and we request approval.
Sheriff Harrington, okay, you're taking two vehicles out there and everybody's...
Yes.
Going along, driving over there?
That is correct. It's cheaper to do that, especially, and probably safer right now since we don't have air traffic controllers. So, it's better to drive than it is to fly.
I don't know.
I had, I had one question on the same scenario there, but, um, would it be cheaper to rent a van or... Or something that way we're not, that way we're not wearing out our, our units so quick or putting miles on them so quick or something like that?
So I, I don't know, I don't know about that, because we never have done that. We've used our vehicles every year, basically for the last seven years that I've been the sheriff, to do this, and it's not a lot of mileage. And the other part about that is that because of the length of the class and the uniforms and stuff that we do have to take, it's easier to take our trucks than it is to try to get a van.
Sounds like they can travel faster, too.
Yes, yes, and, and, uh, I've got guys like Drake and some of these other guys who, it won't fit, could be a thirteen-passenger van and it'll fit four people.
Well... I, I was just thinking off of the top of my head, but anyway, you got those clip-on lights that just go on top of a van, too, but anyway.
But no, it, it's, uh, it has been our experience that driving down has been cheaper for the county as well as the amount of equipment that we have to take, it's better to have a pickup truck.
Understandable.
Chairman, I'd like to entertain a motion on Agenda Item Six to request approval of out-of-state travel to Reno, Nevada, as described by Sheriff Harrington.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Dana. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Approval of checks?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the checks in the amount of six million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and one dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Wade and second by... Who?
Dana.
By Commissioner Dana. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Fast five-zero. Approval of reports?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve reports.
I second.
Motion by Commissioner Dana, second by Commissioner Perry to approve reports. All in favor, saying, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Unscheduled communications limited to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak before the commission?
Don't everybody get up at once.
Come on.
Okay, not Rita?
Come on.
County manager's comments.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I want to ask Alex real quick to give us an update on the low-water crossing in Verindo. I think you have something scheduled on that.
Oh, yeah.
Chairman, Commissioners, just to bring your point of the day, we have been taking a lot of calls and some folks upset in northeast area, park, park of county and town. The Verindo low-water crossing has been concrete. I don't know, somebody gets a chance to drive by, it's close to you. The contractor is planning to do what we're calling a soft opening, meaning not advertised other than today. We are going to do a soft opening. We have some flood gates, you know, high with, with high three barricades and turnaround signs for flood. Those will be going in. Contractor's supposed to be at the end of the week or midweek to make action. And so they plan to open it by the end of the week and let the public start traveling. Essentially, we're going to do that some dress-up work and the gates to do, and then that project will be completed.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, I appreciate that.
And I just want to take that moment to shout out for all the work that's being done around the county, whether it's the flood control or whether it's the road department. There's a lot of stuff happening out on the roads. Potholes are being patched like there's no tomorrow or like there's no pothole patching truck on the way. They'll, they won't even need it by the time it gets here, it seems like. They'll, they'll make some, okay.
Oh, yeah. Don't.
Anyway, the whole staff does a wonderful job, and I'm really proud to work at Chavas County. We, we just have a, a good staff, people that care, people that try to get things done, and you saw it again this morning with the clerk's office and the way they run an election, you know, they, everybody here cares about what's going on and, and the work that they do, so want to shout out to them. I want to let the Commissioners know that the twenty-twenty-six Legislative Reception, which is hosted by the Roswell-Chavas County Economic Development Corporation, is going to take place at the Eldorado Hotel in Santa Fe on February the fourth from six to nine p.m. So if anyone is interested in attending that event, if you'll let us know, and Jessica can help us make arrangements for, for you to have a place to stay. But that's always a great thing. We kind of showcase Chavas County and all the things we've done to anyone who steps through the door there in Santa Fe, and we usually have a pretty good turnout, so want to invite everyone to that. Also, want to point out that earlier this week, I guess, on Tuesday, Veterans Appreciation Day by the Chavas County Commission, you've provided a proclamation for the veterans and also acknowledged that, again, Chavas County buildings will be lit up with green lights for Operation Green Light across the nation to recognize and honor our veterans throughout the ages. So the courthouse and the Chavas County Administration Building both have green lights shining on them. Want to encourage everyone to change their porch light to a green light, turn it on at night, again, to honor our, our veterans and, and the things that they've done for us. Back to elections real quick, I want to congratulate my youngest brother, Joe Williams. He is now a town counselor in, in the big city of Hegerman, and so, I mean, wow. I, I hope that he'll still invite me to his house once in a while. We also have had a busy few weeks with Senate seat number thirty-three. Of course, Chavas County met on the fifth and put forth the name of Rex Wilson. On the seventh, John Block's name was put forth by Otero County, and then on the tenth, Mark Fisher's name was put forth by Lincoln County. So the governor has three names from which she can choose. She can't go beyond that list. It has to be one of those three people, so we'll see what happens. All of us have sent letters, both to the chief clerk of the Senate as well as the governor's office, and in our case, we also sent hard copies as well as the digital electronic stuff to make sure that they got it. And I did get a notification yesterday from the governor's office, they received it, so we're in good. Special meeting, thank you guys for telling us the fifth, we'll make sure we do it. I thought it was interesting that the ballot drop box had nine, I think you said, people, and I wonder what the cost per ballot is for a ballot drop box. It seemed kind of like a lot of money spent in our county, and I'm sure other counties have the same thing, if they're so underutilized, it'll be an interesting thing to find out. Want to announce to everyone to watch the courthouse steps after Thanksgiving, we'll be putting up our nativity scene. Chavas County, after Christmas last year, we waited till Christmas decorations were on sale and, and we were able to obtain a life-size nativity scene that we'll put on the courthouse steps for, for the public to appreciate. With that, that's all I have. Thank you, Commissioners, for all that you've done for us, and, and we'll make the changes to this holiday schedule immediately after the meeting, so you can sign for it. Thank you.
Commissioners, communications, Dara?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Bill. I appreciate that change on the holiday. Like I said, being a mom and traveling, Christmas Eve was always tough. Load up the kids and let's go to grandma's, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate y'all going with that change. Thank you so much. Like I said, Cindy and her staff, thank you very much. I know it's, it's hard. I know, I've hea- I've heard the comments, you know, when the poll workers and stuff, and it's like the poll workers aren't the problem, it's, it's the person that's having the issue when they go in to vote. So I really appreciate all of our poll workers, they do a wonderful job. So, I really appreciate all of our poll workers, they do a wonderful job, thank you so much. And I'm with Bill, I'd love to know how much, it, it'll, I, I will bring this up at our next New Mexico Counties Board meeting, I think that'd be a good subject for the board meeting to take on. Each county, you know, this was a mandate, it wasn't a shoulda, it, it was a shoulda, and then all of a sudden the Secretary of State says you will. She even had clerks in her own party that said, no, they don't want to do this because they saw the handwriting on the wall. So, I'm going to bring that up. How much did these cost and how, and what is the cost? Because we have to provide security cameras, we have to go, what, every three days to make sure, pick up and all that. Chavas County is, is blessed with great staff, but what about Burnaleo, Dunyanah, those counties, even the smaller counties, you know? Is that a mandated burden, as we have seen that Santa Fe likes to do, to all of us for nine ballots? So, I think we should worry more about our military ballots, getting to the military and getting back than a drop box. So, but thank you so much, we did wonderful. Thank you to everybody, we had some great candidates for that Senate Thirty-three, so we'll see when the governor gets back from her wonderful trip burning jet fuel from Brazil to tell us how bad we are on carbon footprints. Maybe, you know, hopefully she'll get back here pretty soon and it'll be interesting to see who she appoints to District Thirty-three Senate Seat. But thank you to everybody, appreciate it. I noticed I had potholes out there that were covered up the other day on Darby, so you guys are everywhere. Thank you very much. I do want to say, I'm going to put my plug in again for East Pine Lodge, be sure and let us know, you know, so we can kind of keep them updated. That is getting a little rough, so thank you. Hopefully it'll stay on schedule with all the stuff that's going on. And flood control, thank you very much, appreciate it. I think everybody kind of cringes when we get some rain. Everybody gets a little PTSD. Who, who would have thought that we would have been that way? But thank you very much for what you do, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Cliff?
I too would like to thank everyone, Cindy, your staff, and very professional, and thank you very much. Treasurer's Office is kind of going through it right now with everybody coming in to pay their taxes, so hopefully that'll be over before Christmas, by the tenth. One thing, the park, coming through, the, we have the green lights right out here, but the parking lot's still lit up and you can't really see it so much, the parking lot being clear. I wonder if there's any way, just put a little green tint on the parking lot lights this time of year, but it would, I don't know if there's just a film to wrap over there or?
Chairman, Commissioners, we'll look into that, that's a great idea, probably just a tint or something that's useful.
That can just be peeled right off? I don't know.
The only issue I see with that is, well, we do have the lift now, and I think we have a cage for it so the men can get in it. Previously, we had to rent something to get that high, but I think that, that with the telehandler that the commission approved last year, I think they could do that pretty quickly and easily.
We, we did acquire a utility-type bucket truck in the county as well. We'll use that for that, or we'll even donate an operator or something like that.
Thank you.
Any comments? Oh, you have one more?
Yeah, there's still, there's still some potholes out there, but boy, they're getting filled in. It's just this weather just kind of overwhelms everything. Brian, appreciate you too, and Joe, you know, and, but it's just a never-ending deal and that'll be nice when the truck gets here and can keep on going too. I think that'll speed things up. And thank you, Rita, appreciate what you do, I want to tell you that. And everyone else, thank you. Thank you all. All right, okay.
You're up, bub?
I'm up. I probably said more than I needed to say this morning. Thanks, Cindy. Thanks, Sheriff. Thanks, Joe. Thanks to the rest of the staff. Brian, you got a nice plaque to hang on your wall. Thank you. You know, there's a few little issues that we had this morning that I kind of think we need to work on a little bit. Other than that, we're all going to eat turkey and that sort of stuff here in a few days and hope everybody has a good holiday and if I don't see you before then, well, eat all you can eat of that pecan pie. Thanks.
Mike?
You know, I, you guys know I'm running for State Line Commission. I think if I get a right-of-way division together, I think I'm going to have him on a committee because he's
Yes.
Pretty fluent on the right-of-way stuff, I like it. And Bill, do you know if we get any commission from this gas station across? Because I see quite a few employees getting a big gulp and, as I'm sitting here watching the meeting, there's a lot of snickers being pulled from over that direction.
I think we're going to have to put a crosswalk, yeah.
Are they? Well, we ought to get something for that because we're giving them a little business over there, but what I will say is what a great place we live in. Thankfully, we have beautiful veterans in this country that have done some great things for us and put us in a place where we can all have a happy Thanksgiving and we can have some happy holidays, and I really, really appreciate it as we're so close to Veterans' Day and the Marine Corps birthday. I wasn't a Marine, but give them a little hoo-rah, right?
Attaboy.
Thank, thank you guys for doing what you do. It's, it's, it's been a pleasure coming to these meetings and seeing the professionalism. And I will say on one note, it's very nice to have this good weather lately. I don't get to golf as much as I used to, but it sure would be nice as I see that pretty day out there, it'd be nice to go enjoy it, so thank you all for doing your thing.
I'd just like to say a few things about Alice Eppers. She was a real lady, and it was such a pleasure to serve with her on the county commission. And I think of all the other things that she has done and how she had ran election headquarters for the Republican Party with, she, she was just fantastic, the job she did. We're all miss her, and the best thing to describe her as a real lady, and she was a wonderful person. Again, Cindy, we thank you for the great job and your staff of doing the election, always. And I see the numbers coming up on the percentage, but still, only twenty-some percent of the people voting, we need, more people need to get out and vote. I think the message should be, if you're an American citizen, do, it's an honor and a privilege to be able to go vote, exercise that, and I hope that the election results will start to increase more. One of the things I was thinking, the next July fourth will mark the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of this great country. And I was talking to Bill, and I think we'd like to set up a committee for the county of what activities we could do to help celebrate that wonderful two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. So, I'd like to set up a committee on that, and anybody who would like to volunteer and work on that, please, please let me know, or Bill, and we'll see what we can do to get the county involved in this wonderful celebration and maybe even work with the city and other folks within our community to make sure that we have a wonderful celebration on July fourth. And again, we had Veterans' Day, which I think is a fantastic thing to honor our veterans, which this morning, as we were honoring our linemen, as I couldn't help but thinking back, as a veteran, when I was first in the Air Force and I was stationed in Oklahoma, and then Oklahoma, you get some rather nasty weather, like storms, and I was a lineman, so I, I can equate to these guys going out there and working in, in bad weather and getting the electricity back up, because I had to do that several times at night, working with the crew to get new transformers put up, so there's a lot of respect for those guys, they do a tremendous job. With that, with our great staff that we have, I thank you all of you, and everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving. With that, we're adjourned. Okay. Go out there and change our transformers in the rain?